We're gonna get ready to open up the meeting. Ron, if you would, we're about to rise for the pledge. Everybody stand.
Hello, Jesus.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Even everyone, thanks for coming in. First up on our agenda, Mr. Beazer is gonna speak on behalf of Congregational Church. Then we're gonna go on some old new business. And we'll have some budget discussion and round out the evening with a non-public session. So since you're here, John, hey, we're ahead of schedule, this is the first time it happens every time.
Awesome, go for it.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome. So I've spoken to Sean, he had been approached by some folks in town. And I guess there was some, I guess, we just don't, we don't want panic out in the community. But there's been some discussion about the church's status as far as continuing and whether we'd be there and some pieces like that. So basically what it comes down to is a little over twenty years ago, I guess it was, the church ended up having to take a mortgage out about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars to save the church structurally. At that time, we had a rather healthy membership. And in a congregational church, it takes the full vote of the congregation. Majority, and normally with an amount of money that we go with a major majority. And the congregation has to vote on whether they wanna take out that mortgage. The congregation voted almost unanimously to take out that mortgage. Unfortunately, since that time, a lot of people who were instrumental in not only taking, going for the mortgage but helping to renovate the church, decided that that's no longer where they wanted to be. We've also had people pass away, people move away, and some pieces like that. So it has, as all that happened, the congregation of that church dwindled. But our bills are still due. That being said, we have gotten that mortgage down to, as of last Sunday, it was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Now that seems like, you know, a daunting number. And it, or for some people, maybe it's not a daunting number, to a church of our congregation, it is a daunting number. But we look also, just to look at that same number, one year ago, that number was at one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So we've taken almost seventy thousand dollars off of that loan in eighteen months. So it's pretty impressive. We have not done that on our own at all, and it's been the community here in the Whipswitch. A lot of friends, a lot of family members have put in money from all over the country. We've had some very generous donations. But, so, I'm here on behalf of the Congregational Church, but I'm actually here tonight on behalf of the fair. So as a member of the fair executive board, we decided that, you know, the church only has a hundred, maybe two hundred followers on Facebook. You know, and gives you kind of an idea, and we're looking to our social media friends. But the Children's Fair has over six hundred followers. So what we were trying to remind people is that, that the fair that we put on every year is in Whipswitch Congregational Church Children's Fair. We just had our hundred and sixty-fifth Children's Fair. It is the longest continuous fair in the state of New Hampshire, no matter what somebody else might tell you. It's a fair. It's not. This fair has been going on since, I believe, the Civil War. So, and what it originally started as is that it was the children of the community that would put on the fair and raise money to then send supplies to the troops. In the time, it has switched around and instead it has become the community and the church puts on the fair and supports children's organizations throughout the Manhattan North Region. And we reach out as, all the way to Keene, Milford, Wilton. As far as we can, if people put in an application and we can help, we help. And what we need people to understand is that if that church, for some reason, cannot continue to function, the fair goes away. So what happens is right now, the, we have to pay that mortgage every month, no matter what happens, or we lose the building. So lights can go off, everything else can happen, we still have to pay that mortgage, otherwise we lose the church. And the financial impact of that mortgage on the church means that there are a lot of ministries that can't happen. We worry a lot of times whether we're going to be able to afford the pastorship there. And we allow that building to be used by many, many organizations throughout the town. And a lot of them, there's no charge for. In fact, in the month of December, we have two events on a Friday and a Saturday that the direct department is using. And we love having that relationship with the rep department of the town. That, that building's available to them. And all we ask is that they clean up, you know, give us notice, if they're date available, we set it. And this past year, we had tap dancing there, we had, I think someone did an exercise class there at one point, and these are all things that we're able to do. We've helped with the summer program. We support the baseball, basketball, soccer, softball, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, sports teams that are starting up years ago when Boynton was starting their soccer team, which unfortunately isn't there now, but when they were starting their girl soccer team, we supported them for three years and so they could get out of the club program and into an actual competitive program. So these are all things that the fair does. Lots of other organizations through town that are, even if they don't seem to be a children's organization, if they help children, we aim to, to give some money towards them. A lot of similar organizations to what the town does, St. Vincent de Paul. Blanking on one of the other ones, but it, I know the town supports that they help with families in need, helping the budget and, you know, get them back on their feet when they have some issues. We're always there when people need us. We actually save money that if someone has a need in the middle of the year between fairs, that we continue to have that money available. So we know that, you know, we're not coming to the town of the Whipswitch government and asking for money. That's not the point, that's not why we're here. But we did want to just make sure that the town knows that we love being an opportunity as a hall, as a building, as a facility for people to, to be able to use it. Like I said, the, the relationship we have with, with the town in general has been just a, a great relationship for many years. And all we ask is that, that people know that. And what we did is we started a fundraiser on Facebook and that we've asked people to just talk about it, keep the conversation going. We know that it's a tough time, and if people can't give money, they can at least give voice to our need. And as a church, our faith is in the fact that God's already picked the people that are gonna give us the money. It's just a matter of us to open the conversation. So, so all we ask is that, you know, that you keep, help us keep that conversation going so that the fair can keep going for another hundred and sixty-five plus years and that the building is there and then the relationship between NICC and the town of the Whipswitch as a whole can continue.
I said there's a fundraiser on Facebook, is there another way people can get, contribute if they're not?
Yes, so they can, they can mail checks directly to the church. It's P.O. Box 141 here in the Whipswitch. They can go online to the church's website and donate to the capital campaign. So we have a donation page at the bottom, and they just choose how to do it, they can use their credit card or debit card and give that way. And if none of that meets, we are lucky. Rock, Rockwell Tax and Accounting is friends with the church and the fair as well, and they have a secure Dropbox. And all you have to do is go up to theirs anytime, whether they're open or closed, and you can drop checks or anything marked for the church or for the Children's Fair into their Dropbox. So there's plenty of different ways that it's available. And even on Facebook, we're not doing Facebook Pay, it's a Venmo account. It's the same Venmo account that we use for the fair, for the calendars and such that we do. So it's plenty of different ways for people to do it, whether you're local or anywhere in the country. I mean, we've, like I said, a hundred and sixty-five years of the fair, there's people all over this country, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a, you know, an awesome experience, ever since we moved to town. You know, it was one of our first summers, you know, we went up to the fair and, you know, got to experience that and deepen our relationship, you know, you know, with the fair specifically and become, you know, annual volunteers. It's just really important to help, you know, support those youth programs and the work that you all do is excellent, you know, what comes out of it. That was interesting, I didn't realize that it actually worked the other way originally, so that's, you know, it's neat.
Yeah, it's one of those funny things when you read the, the history of the fair, you know, years ago and, and and we understand, like, trying to save the Old Town Hall. And everyone's all worried about, you know, well, what, what can we do and what can't we do inside the Old Town Hall? They used to auction off animals inside the Old Town, inside the Old Town Hall. So just imagine, like, we're worried about scratching the floor with a chair. We used to have hooked animals walking in and out of there, so it's just one of those pieces that, that, you know, that the, the entire town as a whole has been connected to that fair for over a hundred and sixty-five years.
John, did any, is there any, like, ARPA funds available, like, for, like, the COVID relief? Cause the, you know, parishioners went down, or is that like a separation?
That's a separate thing, we, we were able to use, just like anything else, we were able to use the payroll plans for that because it went simply for payroll.
Yep.
But other than that, no.
There's no grants or anything?
John, what was that post office box again?
One forty-one.
One forty-one, thank you.
All right, and then, did you wanna, like, share any type of timelines or?
Like I said, right now, we're at one twenty-nine, we have a goal. I mean, obviously, it'd be, it'd be absolutely amazing, we could be at, you know, a hu- a hundred, you know, a flat hundred thousand before the end of this, this year. Our, this particular fundraiser, we're running through New Year's Eve. So it started the day after Thanksgiving and we're running it through, you know, the, the, the giving season is kinda how we look at it. And we even, you know, just basically said, if, you know, any amount of money is, is, is a generous gift because we know people give out of their need more often than they want. But the, we figured if five hundred people that were friends with the fair gave fifty dollars, that's twenty-five thousand dollars that goes directly to, to help pay off this loan. And, you know, when, when you think sometimes of what we spend our monies on throughout the year, throughout the Christmas season, when, you know, something like that can make such an impact historically, I think it's, it's a great opportunity.
What's the Venmo, do you know?
Uh, yes, actually, uh, give me one second. So when you look it up, it actually, it'll come up as Chris Bergeron, because she is one of the chairs of the fair. But it's connected to the Children's Fair bank account. So it is NICF eighteen sixty-one is the Venmo account, or it's, or it, um, if you look for the email address, it's NICF eighteen sixty-one at yahoo dot com.
Okay. John, is that eighteen sixty or eighteen fifty?
Eighteen sixty-one.
Is there anything you guys need volunteers to help with or do as far as time?
Come next Children's Fair, obviously, we love having all the volunteers we can possibly get, and we're gonna be reaching out. Just, again, more and more throughout the year, just asking people to, to be there. Cause as a, an agent congregation, agent help, you know, it's, it's five days of setup and one day of breakdown, and it's pretty impressive. But, no, any, again, any help at all, it is appreciated throughout, you know, the fair season and, and I know Karen and Linda and Chris will be reaching out and being very vocal as we get closer and closer to the fair season again, and we, we've got some changes upcoming and some more opportunities for people to get involved.
What about during the rest of the year, not just during?
Uh, not, not too much right now. You know, like I said, this, right now, is our, our biggest push
Yep.
at this point, because once we can stop, you know, looking at paying over two thousand dollars a month to a mortgage, then that gives us two thousand dollars a month that we can put back into the ministries and back into the community, which is what, what we'd like to do is take it and push it back out again and, and do good things with that, so that's our hope, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
It was good to see you, John.
Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Right on, John.
Would it be appropriate or not appropriate if I echoed your post on the Town and Whipswitch Facebook page? Or is there a separate, do we wanna keep that separate?
Keep it separate, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, yeah, they could, like, if they shared, like, shared it to our page, I don't see why not. Like, if somebody wanted to share it on, I don't know.
Post it on Life and the Whipswitch, you're on that, right, personally?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what, when he had reached out, I wasn't sure, like, exactly what we could do, but I figured giving him the time would be um, appropriate, you know, to kinda explain, cause there's been some questions, you know, swirling around in the community, so. Appreciate that, found old new business.
Can we get Steven?
Absolutely, start right there. Even's there.
How are ya?
Good, thank you, how are you?
Good, good. Uh, Steven Conner, I live over on, uh, Upper Pratt Pond Road. I just called Devon, brought up the hill, uh, the intersection of North Road and Upper Pratt, which is actually laden with skid marks.
I noticed that in the pictures.
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, and I was thinking about that as I was driving down here, I'm looking at it and I'm going, this is just blatant disregard, but I'm not talking here to talk about people striving. People go up that hill even at a normal speed, but legal speed, and it's a blind, by a blind driveway is not the right term, but, you know, the actual Upper Pratt, the intersection, coming out of there, there's very real risk of being T-boned, which I actually almost been multiple times. People speeding over that hill, people going speed limit over that hill, and maybe just looking in another direction for half a second, that's all it takes. I did provide Devon some pictures, showing the directional, you know, the arrows and whatnot, did the best I could to, you know, paint that picture. I'd just like to get some kind of a sign there, not so much speed limit, but, you know, I said, said blind driveway and I did, you had very kindly corrected me, maybe that's not the right, you know, cause it's not a driveway. It, it's an intersection, but whatever, you know.
Dangerous intersection or something?
Yeah, what, whatever, you know, the town would deem appropriate, but just some kind of a sign to show, you know. I see, you know, a lot of the houses put signs for slow children, these are their own signs that they put out there, you know, and you know, some people have lights that stick out into the road, so, you know, so you think a car's coming, and it just kinda, kinda brings you back. You know what I mean? So just something that can bring people back and maybe just catches that, so it's a little safer.
So that, there is no sharp curve sign or anything like that out there?
There's not, there's, there's not, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, there's nothing there, if there was, I wouldn't be here, you know.
Well, yeah, no, I just.
For another reason, but, but yeah, you know.
Well, I guess sometimes signs just become like a part of the landscape and people don't pay attention to them, so I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't.
And if, if that were the case, I, I would certainly, I might still be here, but I would also be out there counting feedback, you know, so.
Do you think that some of them curved mirrors would help?
I actually, that, it's funny you mention that, I brought that to my wife and she said, you know what, one step at a time, baby steps, get the sign, you know.
So just the war, I mean, we have them throughout town, like, coming into Smithville, there's a yellow sign showing that there's a road.
Yeah, I, I actually think that that would help, I don't know, if it's a lot more than a sign or equal to. But for the people, and I don't wanna speak for Joe, but for me, and I think for some of the other people I talked to on, on, uh, Upper Pratt and some on Middle Pratt, they know that, that the danger that's there. You know, they know that, you know, when they come out, it's like they kinda, gun it, you know? It's like, you know, zero to thirty in like two seconds and then back down to five, you know? So, but, you know, so that mirror would provide us with, or me, with a, a lot more comfort. You know, so I can see what's coming or not coming, rather than, you know, hoping and praying that they see the sign.
Right.
Is that, has the town put any of them up? I've seen a few of them around.
I'm not sure about the mirrors, I know one mirror specifically that's at the end of Beechwood was put up by a resident. Uh, himself, cause he had asked for something and nothing was happening, so he just went out and grabbed the mirror and put it up, but.
Cause there's quite a few residents down there on Upper Pratt.
Yeah.
There's a lot of houses down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of permanent, permanent residents, not just the summertime, you know, and whatnot, so, us being one of them, my family.
Well, there's nothing I know of that would restrict us from, you know, putting up a mirror and a sign, cause it seems like it'd be, you know, that, that area comes up every year, uh, yeah.
That's good to know.
Yeah, and there's been, like, talks of, you know, adding a streetlight for nighttime or, like, all sorts of different.
This town doesn't wanna see streetlights, I'm, I, I came from Nashua, I left Nashua with the streetlights.
So that's what, that's what they play with.
Right, right, yeah, sure, sure. You know.
But yeah, but yeah, you definitely need more than a rock to.
Yeah, you know, just each, each thing else doesn't help either, because then you're just, you know, impending doom or doom, you know? So.
Yeah, yeah, I tend to think you're right that signs become.
Yeah.
Hey, there's a new sign, and then six months later, it's like.
Yeah, part of the landscape.
LED flashing stop signs in a lot of places.
Yeah.
But I, I do know the people on Upper Pratt won't forget, or at least I, try to speak myself, won't forget the mirror. Uh, I'll, I'll use it every time, because when I get to that point, at the end of the road, that's what I'm thinking about every time is five seconds of panic, five seconds of panic, you know?
That's a tough way to go about it.
Yeah, you know, and, you know, it's, if I, we go through that a lot in a day, you know what I mean, but if we can control one aspect of it, just wipe it out, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would seem to me that the mirror would be a priority over.
I'm gonna have people, Peter can quote, see how much it is.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, maybe what we should think about doing is, there's quite a few other intersections that are in a similar situation. Like, uh, coming out on, um, one twenty-three, one twenty-four from Old Ridge Road.
Okay.
Okay, cause you're right there, coming up the crest of the hill, gonna run that turn, and it's a blind, blind area. At the bottom of Old Wilton Road, where it comes out on forty-five, that's another area, and I'm sure that if I could name those three off the top of my head, that there's probably going to be another, a dozen or more.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, you know, I know that, um, that the state did do some traffic accident studies, or Southwest Regional, um, uh.
Planning Commission.
Yeah, Planning Commission did one, I think it was last summer or the summer before, and showing where accidents were and, you know, and, and everything got dropped, but it was something about, maybe we need to put either a blinking light to slow people down, or some signs up, or do something. But they did put down, you know, which ones were, um, they broke them down into which ones were lethal accidents versus non-lethal. And places that had two or three accidents in one location certainly needed to be looked at.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really bad. Wind blowing, oops, sorry.
No, go ahead, that's where Old Ridge is.
Yeah, well, not like at that corner where Wind Blowing is, Old Ridge is.
Yeah.
After or before that.
Yeah.
The road committee doesn't get into any of that sort of stuff.
No, and at our last meeting, I asked if they wanted to k- kind of expand onto like road safety type things, and they said no. Uh, but they just wanted to keep it basically, you know, the paving and maintenance aspect.
Maybe the police department can help us with that, cause they know, uh, they're driving the roads all the time. So they'll know where accidents have been and, and certainly, you know, what the visibility is like going around turns and et cetera.
Yeah, yeah.
They may know the hotspots.
Okay, but, oh, it sounds like this board's favorable, you know, to be taking some type of measures. Uh, I think the, the mirrors, what are your thoughts on the mirrors specifically then?
No, I was just talking mirrors only, but I.
No, I mean, but in that, cause that's something different, so we'll go and put up a sign in two days. Like, we could probably put out those, um, black and yellow signs with the arrows.
Sure.
And, you know, sharp curve, it's a pretty common sign.
Right.
Uh, but then if there's nothing, help aiding the people that are looking to enter the roadway.
Right, two ways streets and whatnot, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But then, we're supposed to go up on the utility pole, and we, we have to go through the permission schedule.
Or a tree, yeah.
You know, to, to make that happen.
Yep.
Are there available trees or?
Uh, you know, I don't know, uh, there's not many on the opposite side on the, uh, where Upper Pratt comes out, uh, cause it's, it's property there. So offhand, I, I don't know.
Well, we, we have an easement on either side of the road, we could put a post.
Yeah, what's the difference between a, a pole and a sign and a pole and a mirror, right?
Right.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, well, it makes sense.
I promise to go out there and index it once a month.
All right.
You heard him.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the minutes, it's a part of the deal.
I said it.
Yeah.
Out loud, on camera.
Yeah, uh, definitely sounds like something that should be addressed and something that we can address, uh, hopefully in short order.
Yeah.
Now, depending on what mirror supply is looking like, yeah.
I'll talk to Peter tomorrow.
Six-month back order on curtain ears, if I know nowadays.
Yep.
Cool, yeah, so it's in the works.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming in, sir.
Thank you.
And I'll talk to Peter tomorrow and I'll get back to you, let you know.
I appreciate you.
Time of, estimated time of.
Delivery.
That's it. No, that's enough work I'll use.
All right, so do you have anything else for old new?
Um, the warrant article for the veterans' credit.
So are these two optional versions or?
No, these, one has to do with the all veterans and the other one is the standard veterans.
So they both need to be put on the warrant?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so what's happening is the state, or do you wanna say it?
No, go.
Oh, um, the state has passed some House bill stating that, um, any, anyone who receives a veterans' credit now, if we don't pass these warrant articles, will revert from seven fifty back to fifty dollars. And what these warrant articles say is that people who are currently enlisted can now be eligible to get the veterans' tax credit. I don't understand why they're making it so we have to re-adopt the things that we already have, why they couldn't just do a new one, but that's what it is, so. There's, there's two warrant articles that are gonna be on the, on the warrant in March, and um, they need to pass in order for all the veterans to continue getting their seven hundred and fifty dollar credit. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, if you could just clarify, cause this came from us, uh, with this, I believe the assessors in last week with one proposed warrant article to now, um, a couple different renditions over email, and then now two.
Yeah.
So if you could just explain, uh, it's switched up to two.
So there was one that kinda, yeah, it has to, the one was, I thought, too confusing. I didn't really get it, so this one, and the state says that you have to re-adopt both. So it's better to separate them, and then that way if one passes and the other doesn't, at lea- at least some veterans will get, like, you know, still get their credit. There aren't a lot of people in town that get the all veterans' tax credit. The all veterans' tax credit is for veterans who did not serve and during a period of combat. So, and the veterans' tax credit is if they saw combat.
Okay. Uh, but both are active in this community?
But both are active in this community, yep.
All right, so then both of these are just looking to be expanded to?
Re-adopted.
Yeah, re-adopted, so that they include currently enlisted.
Correct.
Uh, service members.
Yep.
Okay. All right, yeah, so, where did these come from?
Um, I actually sent out an email to. Um, I actually sent out an email to that town administrator group and said, hey, does anybody have something that's. Um, about the, the new veterans tax credit, and I got a couple of them back, they all had both of them separate.
Okay.
Um, some of them, this was the best one, so we kinda stole it from another town, but.
I know, Jennifer had some input in the last version, um, did she look at this and is satisfied?
It's, yeah, yeah. Yeah, she's the one who did this, and the, and the board of assessors voted on it last night, and they voted to accept it.
Okay. Oh, excellent.
So, they wanted it on the record that they voted to accept it on, in their minutes.
Okay.
So. Um, yeah.
Alright, yeah, so, and then, I'm not sure exactly like how the whole number numbering of the warrant articles goes.
Yeah.
But I think we should probably keep this, um, together, you know, like not together, but.
Oh, yeah, but yeah, nine and ten are.
Exactly, and then not completely at the bottom of the list.
Six and seven, yeah. Yes, I agree.
Yeah. Um, I encourage anybody that has any questions to please reach out, um, to anyone on the board or, um, working with the town, um, to get clarification on these. And just that it's very important, um, that we're able to retain, uh, this, uh, tax credit, uh, for our veterans and our enlisted service members. So please don't do a yes, no, or no, yes.
Right, they both have to be yes.
Yeah.
Are we legally allowed to have explainers? Cause I know, like at the polls, I had numerous people come. And complain about them last, or the referendum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Numerous people, they were like, I have no clue what that meant.
I didn't even. Right.
So unfortunately, we're not supposed to, uh, because that could be our perception of that question.
Right.
And we're going to pitch it whether or not, like, whether we support it or not, like.
Kinda like I just did.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, so we can't, like at the polls, explain things, and if you notice Bob's even very careful with having warrants.
Right.
Things and make sure to ask people if they make a error on their ballot, what do you wanna do? And it's almost like. He stays away from even giving them the two options avail- you know, three options available, it's just, you really need that person unprovoked.
Right.
Yeah.
To want to either cast a new ballot, you know, like, to make the decision for themselves.
So now if, um, a group of veterans wanted to. Put out an explainer, that's something different.
Yep.
Correct, yeah, yeah, and I know even, uh, Ron came in before the meeting and expressed, um, the fact that he's planning to stand out at the polls.
Yep. Right.
Um, with, like, it sounded like a little explanation.
Right.
And to, you know, ask people to support, uh, the warrant articles, which is completely fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, a yes will allow the veterans to keep getting the seven hundred and fifty dollars, and no vote will allow the veterans to get a fifty dollar tax credit. I mean, in a nutshell, unbiased.
Yeah. Yep.
But both of them will expand.
To include, um, currently enlisted.
To include, and that's.
Right.
Per a vote of the State House this year.
Yeah, we don't have a choice in that, you, you must adopt that.
If you're going to have it, it's going to expand.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, so it's whether or not it's gonna be funded to the two and fifty or seven fifty, like, for all those enlisted, uh, folks as well.
Right.
Alright, um.
One question?
Yep.
Is, um, and, uh, focus this over to Debbie, cause it may need some clarification. Um, reservists and National Guard are not considered active duty?
I thought Jen, I, I honestly didn't.
And, and I don't know if they're taking it into consideration that those are active duty in respect to these, um, uh, these two warrant articles.
Let me ask Jen, cause she has delved deep into this.
Well, delve deep naturally, yeah.
It's alright, I, I'd like to clarify. I'm sorry, I thought she was still here.
So you're just looking for clarification on the law specifically?
Yeah, is it going to include the reservists and National Guards?
Yeah.
Because they're part timers, uh, versus, uh, enlisted or, versus active duty people. Which are ones that are, um, you know, they're full time in the military.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it says currently serving, it doesn't say active duty, it doesn't say reserve or National Guard, okay? Okay, I'll find out.
So, so, do you, how do you feel with how these are written?
Um, I like them, other than, you know, just the, the question I had about, um, you know, the inclusion of, of reservists and, and National Guard.
So if that is something that's allowed, do you think that it should go into this, like as a clarifying point or?
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, because I don't know what the House actually voted on or what their thoughts were when, when the bill was passed.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it say on this RSA seventy-two twenty-eight B, which gives, um, current requirements?
Well, the current requirements do not include National Guard and, um, reserves.
And it didn't, and it didn't include.
I don't know if the.
Active duty people.
Correct, right.
Right. So, I don't know if RSA seventy-two twenty-eight B got rewritten.
Hmm.
Or if the, uh, when this was passed, if anything was ever mentioned about, um, those topics that I brought up.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll check into it.
But for the purpose of this, um, I'd like to make a motion, um, to approve the two warrant articles as written. Um, for the, uh, ballot for March.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You'll have these as a part of the minutes too, right?
Yep. Yeah.
Alright, so do you have anything else, Debbie, for old new?
No.
Jason?
Nope.
Lou?
No.
Alright, so on to budget discussion. Joe and Dennis, thank you for coming in. Hopefully we won't need you, but, um, so what'd you guys think going through the budget program?
Did you look at it?
I, to be honest, I haven't.
Okay, um, so this afternoon, um, I had a, um. Flash come through of thought of the, that'd be nice to have something to write down on, and after about thirty minutes of trying to figure out how the heck to print this. We made a call to Dennis, um, and he, he put it in a format, um, on paper, so we can kinda see it. It doesn't have the level of detail in the notes available, um, that's in the computer program. But it can at least be a tool in helping identify things initially, like points, like, uh, interest. So, uh, for this evening's purpose, I guess, you know, I kinda wanted to see where you guys, where you guys' thoughts were with the bottom dollar number. Like if you had a chance to even take like a initial look through things and just see if anything kinda stood out to you. Um, you know, for me, you had mentioned, you know, some major changes potentially with the police department, um. That were gonna be proposed that weren't necessarily even a part of this spreadsheet and the body of work that the FAC had already put together. So for them, it's like another one, um, for me, like to kinda get an idea and clarification of, uh, what direction they wanna go in, uh, for twenty twenty-three and beyond. Um. And then just start kinda scheduling, uh, department meetings. During our select board meetings for the next, uh, four weeks.
So, the first one is everything. The second one that has a little one at top has the priority one. So like this, this is what has to be there in order to run the town. The second one, that's not man's cape, it's portrait by mistake, um, that is the priority two, so those are. What was the actual definition? It would be nice.
Suggested.
Suggested.
The third is desired.
The third is desired. So that, so that, but obviously they're a lot thinner, so different departments had different requirements to. That they wanted to either add or not, or possibly.
Yeah. Yeah, so like the priority one, you'll kinda give an id- get an idea of what it, you know, it's gonna take just to keep the lights on, um, in the department heads', um, opinions. Which I think it was about a ten percent increase, if my memory serves me. Over last year's, um.
That's about right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe shy less, but, yeah.
Yeah, and then there's some definite points of interest, um, in the different departments, um, that I've kinda gone through and identified. Um, like one, uh, for me, right off the top, like on the first page, was from the assessors. Um, there's a new, it looks like a new line for assessor's contract, which was sixty, uh, four hundred dollars. Which compromises, you know, ninety something percent of their overall increase, uh, their request increases at about twenty-one, twenty-two percent. Uh, but to, you know, get a defining of what that is.
Yeah.
And then how really important it is, um, to the assessors. And there are a couple other spots where there's just anomalies, I'm thinking, um, in it. Um, but every, you know, five thousand dollars adds up, only takes twenty of them to be a hundred thousand and.
Right.
Um, there's certainly enough lines to kinda go through and find stuff. Uh, so for the purpose of this conversation, um, now. Do you guys feel comfortable with seeing if, um, Mike can come next Tuesday, next Tuesday's meeting, uh, to go through his budget?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, alright, and, uh, again, gonna really encourage you to, um, do as much pre-work as possible, um, before the meeting. So that we can move through it as efficiently as possible, um, with him, so you already have questions, um, prepared. Um, for him and the different talking points, and maybe even a couple different scenarios to propose.
This'll be just for the assessors?
No, police department.
Police department.
Yep. Sorry if I kinda went, melded the two together, uh, but as it sits right now. With all requests of all priority levels, um, it's looking at like a hundred and thirty-six percent. So a thirty-six percent increase over last year, and then hearing that there's potentially more. Um, that's being looked at, I definitely wanna identify those issues, um, right away. Right, cause it's one of our largest budgets.
It's the PD, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you wanna, um, do anybody else other than the PD next week?
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking, uh, it'd be good for fire.
Yeah, she's coming anyway.
Yep.
Okay.
Joe, this spreadsheet that you emailed the other days, that one has not been forwarded and is not part of.
No, that's just this police department. And, um, so what, what, what that spreadsheet does is it breaks up from the priority one, two, and three. And allows you to pick, uh, pick and choose of the priority twos and priority threes that, that you, that you are thinking about, and then seeing what the impact is. Uh, we can probably review that next week pretty, pretty, well, quick, we can review it quickly. Uh, there'll be a lot of Q and As to come out, but I think there's probably like ten items that we wanna talk to in, in depth about. Uh, but the, um, there was, e- everything in that spreadsheet is, it's actually been built up into the, the master spreadsheet, so you do have that. Uh, it's just organized differently so that you can see this line item went from this to this, uh, and this increase is because of this.
Oh.
So it's a little bit more detailed.
So that, that is in this already?
It is, yeah, it should be nothing new.
Okay.
Um, added it, but, but, uh, but it's in a different format, so you can easily see the dollar impact of, of, uh, a ballistic shield, for example.
Okay.
If you wanna add one or two, what happens if you do that, then it, then it goes up.
Alright, good, I thought my stomach was like churned in a little bit, um.
Nothing new has happened, I made a few refinements, but, uh, nothing new.
Yeah. Okay.
But it is, uh, we're starting off with more.
The, the, the base minimum budget is higher, yes.
Forget the. It is higher.
Yeah. Yep.
And there are the comments that give.
Yeah.
Explanations.
Right, so it's like.
And part, part of that is because we're, we're spending a lot of time going in detail as to, as to what is a police uniform. Uh, and Mike came up with a comprehensive list of what a uniform is, and his budget last year was two thousand dollars. Well, that's not gonna staff, you know, six officers with belts and, and, and boots and, so. I think it's like eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, and that, and that, and, and we planned for, like a service belt would last five years. Uh, and, and, you know, Mike's not eligible for a service belt for two more years, so we went through that level of detail to say, yeah, this officer would get a new service belt, this officer wouldn't. Uh, and, and we spent a lot of time in detail to do that, so, but still we came up with about nine thousand dollars per year, uh, if you don't forget twenty twenty-three. So, as opposed to two thousand, and then the question comes, well, where did they get that money before? Uh, it could've come out of one of the other rotating funds, like the details.
Right.
You know, detail fund, uh, or, or, and also because every time they lose an officer, that the, they, their payroll decreases for that year. And they're able to use that money elsewhere.
Right.
So now that they're full staff, we can't count on budget money from a losing officer, so, you know, these other things have come up.
Yeah.
We don't wanna lose the officers exactly.
Right.
Correct.
Uh, and also in, in the minimum, uh, I included the, um, longevity incentive, which wasn't approved. I think that was an oversight on my part, uh, so that's in there, it's not really a big impact, but, but certainly next week, we can go through that level of detail too.
So this one that says all, so Dennis worked it out, all priority one, priority two, priority three that are separate. So the one that says all, this bottom line includes.
One, two, and three.
One, two, and three, so if we said yes to everything, say yes to the dress, that's what that number would look like.
Yes, yeah.
Not as bad as I thought it would be.
Did you get your tax bill yet? I got mine.
Yep, I got mine.
Me too.
Yep, but I, I thought it would be all ors.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I think it shows, uh, uh, that the employees and department heads are not.
Right.
Shooting for Taj Mahal.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, they've done a good job, you know, themselves, kinda sifting through what they needed and where to offset some of the costs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. Yeah, so, you know, next week's gonna be police and fire, um, so just really be well versed on those budgets and all the. Detail that the, uh, FAC had provided us, uh, please don't let it go to waste. Uh, cause they spend countless hours with the departments already, so the least we can do is, you know, do that little bit of research and ahead of the meeting, um. You know, and then have follow-up questions, uh, for some of that, uh, detail that you, you know, that you guys provided in the report.
Do we have these available in, um, Excel format to?
You got them on your, in your email.
Oh, we do, okay, that was the one that came out a while back?
Well, no, the last version was on the twentieth.
Twenty. November twentieth.
November twentieth, I'll check on that.
It should be three dash one, version three dash one.
Yep. Version three.
Yeah.
I think the only thing it didn't have was the, that item that was listed in the email, whereas in actual savings, uh, and sixty thousand's still in the. The spreadsheet. the spreadsheet.
Savings, what?
Uh, for the um, the, what the heck is it, for the fire department?
For the communications.
With the communications, yeah, for dispatch.
The fire department had communications that was taken out of the communication group.
Yeah.
And put into the fire department, which made it look like the fire department's budget jumped by about sixty grand.
Right.
But it's not a jump, it's just a transfer from one line to another.
No, no, I got that, but then, it's, you guys actually went back for the last two years and put in what that amount was for that line, so it didn't look so extreme.
Right.
Which was good, you know, cause it's like showing an apples to apples comparison, but then uh, the sixty thousand initial request. The actual is only fifty-seven thousand, two hundred.
Right.
Some odd dollars, um, but that just hadn't been updated, like in it. Like in the, the format, or in the, the report itself, yeah.
I thought that it was updated to fifty-seven and changed whatever it was.
Yeah.
Uh, look on priority one, fire department, uh, probably says communications add or near the bottom.
It could have been there. Yeah, so it's still, it's at the, it's at the top, it's still sixty.
Communication. Yeah, it's still sixty.
Okay, then I guess it wasn't updated. That will be fixed and you'll get a V dot, or a dash two.
Alright.
It's all good. I don't know how you kept track of it all beginning.
No, it was great, yeah, it was really, really good, and uh, it got confusing for me on the computer, and I didn't want to change or touch, touch anything. I know that there's, you have a hard copy and all that, but, you know, I don't know how to make, set my own separate copies and.
Yep.
Yeah.
I was feeling like a real knucklehead until I was, when I was trying to print it out so I could write stuff.
Can't you just do a save as, showman's copy?
Yeah.
And then you can play with it all.
Yep.
Oh.
It's up in the file.
Yeah.
I don't know Excel very much, but.
Yeah.
Well, with that comment, and I realize that it is a very big file, it's, it's a monstrous file, quite honestly. So as you're going through any of the details, and if you need any technical assistance uh, with the Excel file. Uh, I'm certainly available for you to reach out to me and, and I will provide you whatever slimmed-down version. Uh, so it makes it a little more understandable for you, um.
Should we have a work session?
Or if it's a technical question about something, say like in the police department, then Joe would be to go to Guy or, you know, to Mike. Uh, to ask them specific questions about it, but.
Yeah.
Anything that you need on that, on that file, don't hesitate to give me a call, cause I'll have to take the blame for any technical issues with the, with the file, but I'll try to support you guys, whatever you need to make sure you had the information available to you.
Okay, and in going through the bigger file, it clicked that, um, one evening after the meeting. Um, when we were speaking of COLA and the um, inflation rates. That the individual department file, Debbie, you know, showed me what she got um, for the town office.
Mm-hmm.
And that has that little calculator where you can just throw that rate right in there.
Right.
So, and we don't have any type of tool for this overall. Would it be, do you guys think it would be good for us to have each individual department's sheet too, or? Like are those a little bit?
Yeah, what, what we could do is we could just trim out all the departments that you don't want to see. And then you've got a, a much smaller file to deal with, but it's still wide, because you've got a lot of data on each of the lines.
Yeah.
Uh, but just keep in mind, the summary sheet's gonna get you to the big picture. And if you have a question about the big picture, then go to the detail line to find out why it changed, or what caused it to change.
Yeah, yeah, so there is no real additional detail that can be added from those than the individual department sheets.
And then it's no COLA.
Hmm, I'm not sure I understood your question.
So is the only other, um, like to be able to put that COLA rate in the individual department sheet? Is that the only benefit to those sheets that you see, like for information purposes?
I get you, okay, on the COLA sheet.
Yeah.
The Excel file, just like any Excel file, you can slim that down to just filter, let's say, the police department. When, when you slim it down to the police department, and you start playing what if with the percentages, then it will kick out the actual uh, value change with each percentage that you put in there.
Okay.
Um. Unfortunately, I couldn't build it into the master file because it, trust me, the, the individual cost for personnel, it's just like, it's all over the place.
Yeah.
I mean, you've got so many variations that it just wasn't prudent to do that. So, that's the reason why I said if you need some additional help using the COLA, um, you know, I, I can work with you on that. But if you just filter down just to the department, and you wanted to see what the COLA change is. Then just filter down on that department and then play with your percentage changes.
Is there a ra, a way to just pull out salaries and out of?
Sure, yeah.
Like make, make, you know, the BOS salaries, DPW salaries, PD salaries. And then have that little COLA box up there, so if we made it five percent, it would change the bottom line to.
Oh, well, if.
You know what I'm saying?
You, I do, but I'm not sure why you want to do that, because many of the percentages are based on the total aggregate. Uh, the COLA changes not only affect the salary, but it also affects the, the rates of all of your, your health.
Oh, rates.
And your retirement, and the FICA, and the Medicare, I'm telling you, it is very, very, and I spent over a day working on that supplemental. To give you something that'll give you a quick and dirty, and it's, it, it should be pretty precise. Cause all the guys in the committee looked at it and said, yep, it's, it's calculating, so.
Holy crap.
Alright, so, and since we're on that uh, topic of COLA, um, that's gonna be a driving force for us, so I think we should kind of pick a, a number. Um, that we're gonna go with, cause that's gonna be factored into the overall budget, so if we're thinking, say, eight percent. Um, that's a huge percentage, you know, so it's gonna have a, so that we don't have to rework it after. So if we're thinking that we're gonna be at that in between six or eight percent COLA rate, start working with that right from the get-go.
Right.
So that we can get to that bottom dollar that we want, um, and know what we have to do, like to get there.
And then see what you can do to the options.
Instead of like working down and then slamming it up.
Yeah. Right.
Again. So, um.
This is the uh, homework you were talking about?
Little bit, yeah.
If we can get this at home, a save as copy and just start plugging in the different numbers and see what it does to the bottom line.
Yeah, but like for the purpose of this evening, we haven't discussed as a board where we want to go with a cost of living percentage.
That's because we don't know what the bottom line is.
So you want to take that approach of.
Well, I don't know.
Work from the bottom line and.
I don't see that we have a choice. We're looking at the overall budget.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what our job is, is to tie it all together and.
I think, the feeling that I, I've gotten is that, the, the previously discussed, like two and a half percent COLA, it's not gonna cut it this year, and we'll probably lose people, like if that's what's announced, so please, everybody, like I just said, two and a half percent, that's not what we're going with, but um. You know, cause there's other towns that are making more significant um, increases, like for the cost of living uh, rates. Uh, so I just kind of wanted to get an idea of at least where we're thinking of going, um. Even if it's, you know, within, you know, four or five percent, like a low and a high number, um, what would the low be? Yeah.
Yeah, I have to say, I would hesitate to just start throwing numbers off without seeing how that impacts. I mean, if we're starting off with, what did we say, twelve percent increase with no COLA?
Yeah, ten percent without, yeah.
And no inflation.
Yep. Yeah, no, and that's why, that's why it'd be important for us to kind of have at least an idea of, cause what's gonna be acceptable.
Yeah.
I feel like in between five and ten percent uh, COLA is gonna be where we're gonna have to be with everything in order to.
Five and ten percent what?
Cost of living raise or increase.
That's COLA.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I said COLA.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I, I thought.
Cause that was, that, everything that I've just been discussing, like for the last few minutes, has been about COLA.
Mm-hmm. About COLA, yeah, I, I realize that, it, but the subject sort of, well, in my mind anyway, sort of changed.
And where, and where we're gonna be.
And, and then, um, you were throwing some other numbers out, and I didn't realize that you were still talking about COLA.
Okay.
That was just my.
Still COLA, so I, um, I believe, like you gentlemen have looked into some of the COLA numbers, like nationally. Um, can you give us an idea of what you've heard out there?
Uh, off the top of my head, I think inflation was at about seven and COLA was six point two something percent. And that was related to either New Hampshire or Hillsborough, and I'm not, it, it was both of them, but I'm not sure which one was which, quite honestly.
Alright, thank you, and then.
It was a little bit lower than the national average.
And then some of the discussions that Debbie's had with her peers, you've heard anywhere from, you know, a low of, I think, four, I think you'd said, which
Right.
wasn't, didn't go over well uh, for that community, and then a high of twelve?
Um, no, I thought it was, I think it was, well, the, so some towns were doing merit and COLA. So, but the combination of the two were gonna add up to like ten percent.
Okay.
I think was the high, and then one of them was doing like two percent COLA, but eight percent or seven percent merit. Um, or they're paying a hundred percent of their health insurance, which, I mean, it's not a bump in your hourly rate, but it's definitely a bump. You know what I mean, so that, that everyone's focus is on employee retention, because you can't get good help anymore.
Yeah.
Help in general, more bodies.
And that's the thing, I think, we've encountered, um, as individuals have left.
Right.
Replacing them is not easy, because it seems like our pay scale is on the low end. And so I don't know if we consider it COLA, or does it even matter what we call it, merit?
Right.
Whatever you call it.
Well, merit would be based on a review. If you're just doing it across the board, you can call it whatever you want, I would think.
So, uh, that is another factor.
Yeah.
Well, if, if you want to consider merit, are, are managers actually doing performance reviews on their employees?
We have not done any of this.
Not currently. So, everything's been in such upheaval over the last, you know, few years, I think it's probably been bored, yeah.
Yeah, I'd stay away from the word merit until you had that in place.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Yeah.
Cause that can bite you in the.
Right.
Right.
Behind.
How so? Because?
Somebody gets a merit increase and someone else doesn't.
Doesn't?
Then they start saying, well, where's the performance review?
Oh, it's just cause.
Yeah.
Yeah, what did you judge that?
Buddy buddy system going on here.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I kind of feel like that with merit raises anyway, with, you know what I mean, I, I think everyone should have a review. But I feel like merit raises can be, you know, played favorites or.
But if you have a good manager, it won't be.
True, yeah.
And it does, it does offer an incentive, I believe.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
That'd be good to get that reincorporated.
Yeah.
Uh, we got our stable administrator, stability in the, well, stability in the administrator's office.
Okay, I was gonna say.
Sorry, I didn't mean to call you stable.
Call me a thick egg.
I was just thinking, should there be a stable administrator, send my horse out, out, or what?
Um, yeah, so that's been, I guess, a little bit more difficult than what I thought it was gonna be to uh, get to that number this evening too, um. So just be ready to have some definite input on uh, COLA percentage next week?
Until we come out with how we're going to manage everything, I don't think we should be talking about any specific numbers.
Which is interesting, cause to me it's a key factor in um, employee retention, uh, and where we're going, and it's going to be
I.
A much larger number than what we've had to deal with in the past, because it's across the board. Like you had stated, we tend to be on the lower end of the pay scale for things, and there's other communities in the state, we've lost people to the state specifically. That have really amped up, um, their packages, um, and hourly rates. Uh, so for us to sit here and think that if there's nothing we can do on the budget to, um, you know, be at like a five percent increase before we even consider COLA and everybody gets nothing, that's not.
Yeah.
Reality, like the reality is that we're gonna have to make some type of decision uh, for COLA, and it's going to need to be more substantial than what has happened in the past.
I feel like it's.
So it's not a number you can run from.
I feel like the COLA should be the starting point of the budget. You know what I mean, cause so, so like you were saying, that's the jumping off point, then would, then, so now you have your, you know, added to this. You get your COLA, so now this is the minimum we're gonna work with, and then can we get the twos and threes in there? Right?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll agree with you on that, considering that we have not had performance reviews uh, in place.
That's what I'm saying.
So that we have a number to uh, consider merit increases by, so.
We, we weren't talking merit though.
Talking.
Only COLA.
And that, and that's why I'm saying, we don't have merit, so.
Right, right.
We had been talking about merit increases as something, but since we have, since they have not had um, performance reviews in, you can't.
Right.
He said, you can't judge merit increases, so it's what the, the only raise I guess that we can give would be COLA.
Is COLA. Correct.
Yeah, that's why it's an all-important number.
Right, mm-hmm.
Um, and like.
How cool was that?
Yeah, like a great num, like an important number for us to start our considerations with. Um, cause at, in going through this more, that's all I kept playing in my head, like even if this is, looks good now. But if we decide that we have to do an eight percent COLA increase, what's that gonna do to that total bottom dollar?
Right.
And then how much more shuffling, am I gonna have to go back and redo?
Right.
Um, so it seemed prudent to define that, or at least come up with some type of definition for COLA um, tonight. But if that can't be had tonight, um, next week, uh, certainly, um.
Well, I think we need to look at, you know, um, other things that um, Debbie had talked about. Was that, um, you know, that some places are, are paying a higher percentage of, let's say, healthcare.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so instead of, um, uh, the employee having to have a, a twenty percent or fifteen percent copay. Um, you know, that, uh, that could be taken up, um, or some of that reduced. And then you can also reduce the COLA at that same point, it comes out, it may come out financially better for the, um, uh, for the employer. Employee, um, simply because uh, there's less taxing on, um, increased benefits package.
All of that is an increased cost to the town as a whole?
Yeah, so you have to take, take away from one to add to the other.
Yeah. Correct, so like to me, it's all the same difference, so instead of doing a ten percent COLA increase, you make it five, and then just add five percent, like the bottom dollar's all the same, but if you want to have that depth of conversation, all I'm asking is that before next week have, like I don't want to sit here and just
Right, pay grade.
like freshly consider it together, please have pre-formed ideas.
Okay.
Um, ahead of the meeting, so that we can, you know, make a decision next week.
Just COLA reach in the master spreadsheet for part-time, full-time.
And then, that kind of gets me to inflation, and I wasn't sure how to factor in inflation uh, for next year. Factor in inflation uh for next year, um.
I know we can't personal file.
Cause I don't know, like of those numbers that they gave us, is that the current inflation rate and that could go down?
Yeah, I'm talking to you from us.
So we don't wanna automatically just plug in like an inflation percentage, cause I think a lot of these numbers are de-. Uh derived from actual quotes for next year.
From or from costs of this year. Yeah, those, yeah, that inflation number.
Is that true?
Inflation numbers?
Based on whatever it was in September.
Things that have an in- things that have an inflation connotation to them.
Right.
There's no inflation on these numbers.
No.
Other than, so when you sat down with each department head or committee or whatever. Do you look at actual expenses this year?
Right.
And so that would incorporate some of the huge inflation that we've already seen as opposed to what we were working with last year.
Theoretically.
This is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Let me give you an example of what you may be talking about, Jason. When I was working with D D P W. I noticed that there was a big jump in, I I think salt was an example, it went up by about twenty grand, and I said, whoa, where'd this come from? He pulled up his just recently received proposal for the twenty twenty three salt bill. And yo, there the barely it was, whatever the amount was, almost a hundred grand. So that was a proposal that was given to him in current dollars. But theoretically, it might be in fact uh. An inflation inflated rate. So uh that value, I don't know, I'd have to look at that one specifically.
Believe in.
But I think it was um. In a, I'm not sure.
So for salt, um specifically. Uh it looks like in twenty twenty one, uh we had only budgeted fifty thousand dollars for salt.
Right, but.
The actual expenditure was eighty four, almost eighty five thousand.
Right. Right.
Mm-hmm.
And then so last year, uh we budgeted seventy six thousand. Um and then the actual cost was about eighty nine thousand.
Correct. As of October.
Mm-hmm. And then so.
So there's two.
So it's almost like this year, we're making up a lot more ground and the request is for a hundred thousand dollars. And then probably in the hopes that it'll be ninety two or ninety three thousand. But instead of annually under budgeting for something, getting ahead of it, and I have a feeling that there's a few items.
Exactly.
Um where you guys identified deficiencies like that?
Mm-hmm.
Um. Cause I think um boards in the past had looked at the bottom dollar.
Right.
And as long as there was like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left over, even though that that line was ex- over expended by twenty five thousand. Well, there's enough money in the budget in general, but that's why we're going through this work now. To identify where all the over annually over budgeted items are, wash those out. You know, you know, make sure that each line is correctly um given its due um respect, um.
Again, each of the individual lines, not in the spreadsheet or papers that you're looking at now, but in the. Individual lines, it should give you the basis for how that number was derived.
Yeah, cause there's no under.
It might be eighty five or ninety dollars per ton, times so many tons and boom, there's the number, or.
Yeah.
We had a proposal and it's this number or something like that. Should be in there like that.
Ah. Alright.
So Joe, you'll be here when the chief comes in?
Yes.
And will we be able to use the screen?
I might do, yeah.
Sure.
Do you have a machine milk up to it or?
Yep, yeah, Debbie will bring her laptop in.
Alright, good.
That'd be great.
Can you send me each of the departments that have salaries, like like I don't care about like. Uh planning board, they don't have any salaries, just so.
The. Personnel support cost calculator file that I sent you. Should have all the salaries in there, either listed as full time or part time.
Okay.
And that's everybody in there.
Okay.
Had to have that in there so I could come up with the cola factor.
Well, that's what I was asking, if you had something for every, all the.
Yeah.
Oh.
So.
We'll talk tomorrow.
Okay. It's confusing, I understand that.
It is, it, too many spreadsheets, I love spreadsheets, but I'm getting overwhelmed.
They can deep die.
Yes, so the the process that we had is we we created spreadsheets for the department. And then we we imported those into the master spreadsheet.
Right.
Um but all the calculations were in with the department into the master spreadsheet. So Dennis pulled all the salary out of the master spreadsheet to allow you to experiment with the cola factor and what the impact is on.
Right.
On the personnel expenses and healthcare and all all that stuff and and. Um and the problem is that that you make a paint, uh an adjustment in the personnel file, it doesn't adjust the roll up in the total master file.
Right.
Um.
I see, so you you would have to just write that down, okay, so now if we do this, it's only add this.
Right.
Right, yeah, whatever, yes, yes.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, now we, on the department level, this is easy.
That's a great tool.
But when it gets to the whole, the whole town.
Yeah. Right.
It it's a little challenging to do that.
Right, so I only have the B O S though.
It's miles. No, no. It's miles added what we had last year.
Yeah.
It is.
Miles, at least, yeah, I will.
Like I said, I make myself available.
Yeah.
If you have questions, don't sit there and get stumped, call me. I'll try to fix it, or somebody will try to help fix it.
I was trying not to bug you, I was right up here and bug Debbie, I'm like, please don't kill me.
That was the first thing he said when he walked in my door, don't kill me.
Yeah. Um.
How'd you like to go?
So if we have the spreadsheet, unless you don't wanna do it. Here and now, but it sounds like it would be relatively easy to look at this right now.
The cola?
The six or seven percent. Or five percent and see how it impacts us and then we could just move on.
Yeah, well, so that's, I just wanted to establish a rate, we don't have to go plug in anything in um tonight.
Oh.
And it doesn't have to be hard line, you know, so. Is that the feeling from the board, is that it's gonna be in between six and eight, six and ten?
I was telling you, I wanna see that bottom number and what it does, because it's gonna impact.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um certainly priority two and three.
Yep.
Um and possibly priority one.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent, so please, you know, take the time to do that, um over the next week. Um and have a definite opinion um form, you know, for next week.
Yeah, cause the problem that I have is that if we um. Are going to do anything with uh an increase in benefits or an increase in salary, not counting adjustment for cola. Um then um you could go with a lower cola number.
Correct, yeah, so that's what I, like that whole thought process, Lou?
We could.
That's what I want to say, I want to say.
Put it all down, yeah. Yeah, do that and just be ready to, you know, chat about that next week.
Yeah. Okay.
Um and I'll kinda look a little bit closer, cause I was looking at it as like a. Its own number, cause like the police department has already incorporated some one, twos and threes of different employee incentive packages.
Mm-hmm.
Within the budget. Um so, you know, by all means, like, you know, look at the cola differences for that department.
Right.
Um and then if you take out the, you know, twos and threes or whatnot, yeah. Yeah, a hundred percent, the the type of uh discussion that we need to have next week.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
I got one more question on this spreadsheet. I don't have um. Excel downloaded onto my tablet, so it goes to, is it Open Office or? Something like that, is that tapping into your copy? No, you can, you can actually, there is a conversion formula that'll take. Um. Uh Microsoft Excel and then convert it over to iOS. So that you could have.
You talking about on your phone?
No, I'm not, so I, Deb emails me a link.
Yeah.
To the spreadsheet.
Right.
I open it up. If I start moving numbers around, is it moving on her?
No.
No, no.
This is my personal thing, I can fearlessly plug in.
That's your own.
Right.
Yes.
Remember, save the original and then make a copy and rename it to whatever you wanna call it. Use that, don't use the original, if you screw up the second copy, no problem, you go back to the original and.
But it's not gonna affect yours.
No.
Won't affect anybody else's.
It's not that sophisticated.
No, okay. Sorry, I I'll be fearless with it.
Yeah.
Is your tablet an Apple or a Microsoft?
It's a.
Samsung.
Sony Android.
Android, sorry.
Android.
Android.
Does Excel three sixty, Office three sixty five work on Android? All the, all the calculations and features, do we have it?
I have Microsoft Office for my Android and it will pick it up, but I would not do anything on my phone. That that's just way too complex.
Can't even see it.
Complex, yeah, yeah, I'd get lost in my own trailer.
My father used a sixty porters television, his computer screen, he looked at spreadsheets, he worked it out.
Ah.
He worked for a while, old Bob Al, Nine X, Verizon, through all that.
Yeah.
And he had built it and he was still scrolling for days.
Um. In this particular case, Jason.
Mm-hmm.
When you set aside some time that you wanna seriously look at the piece, parts and pieces. I can bring my laptop over to you or we can meet somewhere and you can use my laptop.
It sounds like Sean is commanding me to do that.
Okay.
Yep.
But I I would not, I would not try to do it on a tablet or a phone. You will drive yourself crazy and off the cliff. Seriously.
You can come in here and use the TV.
Yeah.
Close the book on it.
I'll close the book.
Yeah, but no, it's it's also important, um cause we, you know, tasked these gentlemen with a monumental. Um effort and you really, I can't say it enough, um exceeded all expectations.
Yep.
Uh for the body of work that you guys put in, um. So we really need to do it justice um on our end and not just look at it. Uh not just take a cursory look at it, but really to get into it and understand it. Um so that it can continue on, like hopefully for next year, uh we can work out some of the bugs. This year and just, you know, come up with good ideas of how to move it forward. Uh cause I already liked how uh you all were talking about, you know, starting the year right out with, you know, budget review. Um and building budgets ahead of this point. Um will be huge, you know, so it's a a tall order. And the four of them have stepped up to handle it and are exceeding it, so please, let's just keep them encouraged and. Have it be um with a point and a purpose that they do their work, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Do deep uh bring your oxygen tank.
Thank you.
So I believe you sent a contact list, so I can get ahold of Dennis.
Pardon me.
When I can, I think it was on an email.
Okay. Okay, I think so.
If not, I'll have to get.
Alright.
Alright.
I will be reaching out.
That's fine, Jason, anytime.
So anybody that's here in the room have anything that they wanna speak about specifically, cause uh we're about to go into our uh first non-public session of the evening?
I second the thank you to these gentlemen.
Uh, very nice, Sue.
I thought it, amazing.
Cool, alright, well, thank you all for coming, uh thank you everybody for watching out there in TV land. Uh have a good night.
Alright, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thanks, and I'll be in touch with you over.
Again.
Nice to meet you guys.
Thanks, Steve.
I have a laptop you can borrow, but it doesn't have a cell or word on it, if you can get word somehow.
Can I get it through the town or?